Good evening and welcome, everybody. It is with great pleasure and great privilege that I sit before you tonight on this beautiful Tuesday, August 14th. The time is now 6:30. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with opening the meeting in an invocation. And at this time, our pastors might be running a little bit late. So I'm going to ask somebody that prays beautifully to pray for us one last time. Ms. Diana, will you please pray for us? And then pledge of allegiance if Robert will be listening.
If we will all bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we give gracious thanks to you this evening for this council that sits before us. We ask, Lord, that you continue to bless them with wisdom and guidance in the decisions that they have before them. We thank you, Lord, for our community. We thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us daily the strength and perseverance to pursue the path that you have laid before us. We ask, Lord, that you bless this agenda, that you bless this council, that you bless city staff and members of this community with faith, with hope, and with love. And we ask, Lord, that you always be in our hearts, guiding us through every decision that is placed before us. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Diana, very much. That was beautiful. Agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. And it looks like we have Mr. Noel Mills here to speak before us. Come on up, sir. Just give me a second.
Good evening.
Just give me one second. A citizen who has a request for city services and/or other items of concern which cannot be approved or otherwise resolved by the city manager may choose to address the council. Citizens who wish to address the city council about items on the agenda will have three minutes to express their position, and please indicate agenda item number on which you wish to comment. All presentations and discussions should be directed to the city council and all questions to the mayor. Any complaints and/or discussion about individuals, personnel, council members, city staff, or other persons would be out of order and will not be heard by the city council at this time. Charges or complaints about specific individuals shall be presented in writing to the city manager. All complaints of this nature must be signed and dated by the individual filing the complaint and will be addressed pursuant to Alice Personnel Policies. Please approach the speaker's stand, state your full name and address when you begin your remarks, so that the official minutes will record your appearance before the city council. If you have written notes you wish to present to the mayor and council, please furnish an extra copy to the city clerk for official files. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council. Although council cannot take specific action on citizens' comments topics due to legal requirements, they will hear the topic, and council may, one, have the item placed on a future agenda for action, or, two, refer the item to a board, commission, or committee, or, three, refer the item to staff for study or conclusion. Thank you for your cooperation.
I have two items I listed on the paper. First is wastewater back up in my house and in the alleyway behind the house. I've called the sanitation department at least six times in the last 20 months that I've lived there, and they have been out very promptly to clean things up, but it's an afford that doesn't seem to go away. It might be needing a better lift station or some other concern of that nature. The second point I wish to make is, at late night, there are a lot of speeding cars on Duval Street between the river and Third Street. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mills, very much. Okay, it looks like there are no other comments at this time. We'll go on to public announcements. Mr. Molina, do you have anything today?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Crisp.
I have none.
Mr. Burke?
None.
Ms. Carrasco?
I wanted to ask council and mayor if we could ask Diana to step up to the podium just to, you know, I want to say thank you for her service. She's, this would be officially our last meeting with her here. And Mr. Sarsa said too, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is, Ms. Lopez is going to be, as y'all know, the new city manager of Coleman, Texas. She's, her last day with us here is going to be Friday. So this is kind of the last city council meeting with us, and I just wanted to wish her well. And I'd like to thank her for everything that she's done for me in the past five months, been a right hand and helped me with everything we've had to do and been a really, really strong asset to our city. And I know she's going to do well over there, but she will be, she will be missed. We will miss you, Diana.
I appreciate that. Mayor and council, I thank you guys for the honor and the privilege to have served this community for the last 13 years. I know you guys are resilient, and as I move on to Coleman, I will take with me all that I have learned, and most importantly... And we really are buena gente. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I'm just a few hours away, and I have mixed emotions, but all good things come to an end and better things await. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you, Ms. Diana. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Carrasco, anything else? Okay. Okay, and at this time, I also want to thank Diana for many years of service and countless hours that, I don't care how many times I came in at night and told her, "Get out of here, go home," she wouldn't leave. And for that, we appreciate your hard work and dedication to this community, to our council and councils before us. We thank you very much, and we wish you the best and best of luck. I also want to say thank you to the teachers of Alice ISD who started school on Monday. Their official day was Monday. Thank you, Mr. Burke, is one of our AISD teachers. And I had the honor of speaking to them, and it's always beautiful to be able to speak to them. Of course, I get caught up and back to school, and I want to start teaching too, and when I heard those openings, I'm like, can I take another job? But I don't think I'll do that. But anyway, they're a great group of people. It seems like we're getting 5,000 students coming back this year, so I'm excited for that. New superintendent, which is a wonderful addition, Dr. Carl Scarborough, seems like he has great ideas and great progress for our community, so I'm excited for a new school year. So with that said, if there are no other announcements, we'll move on to agenda item number three. Consider and act upon approval of city council minutes for the July 24, 2018 city council meeting.
Mayor, for your consideration of the minutes from our last meeting, if you guys, I'm sure you had a chance to look at them. Have you seen any changes that need to be made?
Counsel, are there any corrections, additions, or anything? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll move for approval of the minutes, city council minutes for July 24, 2018. Is that guys presenting?
Motion has been stated. And second, agenda item stands as stated. Approval of the minutes. Agenda item number four, conduct a public hearing on the tax rate and taking a record vote on the proposed tax rate on the City of Alice fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Ms. Sarsa?
Mayor, here we're going to have Mr. Sidney Vella with the Jim Wells Appraiser, Chief Appraiser with the Jim Wells County Appraisal District. He's going to go over the proposed budget's tax rate, and before you open the public hearing, and then we can have some discussion, and you can open the public hearing and take a record vote on that.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
As Michael said, I'm Sidney Vella. For those of you that may not know me, I'm the chief appraiser with the Jim Wells Appraisal District, and we also act as the tax assessor collector for the City of Alice as well. And one of the things that I work on each year is calculating what's called an effective tax rate. Now, an effective tax rate is simply a tax rate that is going to generate the same amount of revenue as you generated last year, but from the same properties being taxed in both years. So it does not include any businesses or personal property that was here that is now gone, and it does not include any new property that was not here last year that came into the City of Alice this year. So it's only looking at the same property being taxed in both years. And this year, because you had an increase in your tax base, not a lot of increase, but it increased to about 1.5%, and you had a decrease in your debt service, the money that's needed to pay your debt service payments for the next year. So those two things combined come up with a lower effective tax rate for this year. Your tax rate for 2017 was 53 cents per $100 worth of valuation. The effective tax rate comes out to .523621. Now, again, that's an effective rate. If you adopt just the effective rate, it's still going to generate a little bit more levy than what you generated last year, about $8,800, something like that, because of the new property that was not here last year that is here this year, and the fact that, you know, you are going to get tax revenue off of that money. But if you go anything above the effective tax rate, that's going to also require that you hold two public hearings. You have to post a quarter-page notice, letting people know when those public hearings will be held. The quarter-page notice has to appear, I believe, a minimum of seven days before the first meeting, the first public hearing. The second public hearing can be no more, no less than three days after the first public hearing, and no more than 14 days after the first public hearing. But that's only comes into play if you're going to go above the effective rate. Now, based on your budgets and how much money you need to operate for the next year, you could adopt a tax rate of less than the effective rate. That's a decision that you all have to make, depending on, again, how much revenue you need to operate from one year to the next. And there's a long, lengthy calculation that goes into it, which I've given copies of all that documentation to Roland and to Vanessa, and I know they've shared it with Michael. I've spoken with him on the phone as well. Do you all have any questions at this time about anything you'd like to know?
Counsel, Ms. Carrasco, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Burke?
Not at this time.
Mr. Crisp?
Let me think this one over, and I'll get with you later.
Okay.
Mr. Molina?
I've got it.
Okay, I don't have questions at this time, Mr. Vella.
Okay, just so you'll know, your calculated debt rate this year is .160453. And again, that's the tax rate that you would need to multiply against your tax base in order to generate the amount of revenue that you need to make your debt service payments for this year.
Was that number again, please?
It was .160453. And last year, it was .182784. And again, that's because you have less debt this year, less debt service payments this year, and you have an increased tax base, so it doesn't take as much of a tax rate to generate the amount of money you need. Now, with the debt service rate, that's pretty much set in stone. Whatever the calculated debt service rate is, is what you're supposed to adopt unless you're going to use some of your fund balance or something like that, or funds from other sources, if you want to lower your debt service rate. You can't raise your debt service rate any more than what this has calculated unless you would have more debt right now. In other words, another certificate of obligation or something like that, which you already entered into, debt that you have right now. Now, your maintenance and operation rate, that's where you get to, you know, play with. If you can save money, you can bring it down. If you need that additional $8,800, then you would have to adopt just that effective tax rate. And it would, as I said, it does generate more money for maintenance and operation than the previous year, but not by very much. And your rollback tax rate, that's the other rate I have to calculate, that's the highest rate that you can adopt without having the possibility that property owners can generate a petition to have an election to consider rolling back the tax rate to the effective rate. But the difference between the rollback rate and your effective tax rate is only 4/1,000 of a penny, so it's not much at all. The rollback rate comes out to .528058. So there's not very much difference at all between the two. But that would be the highest rate that you could adopt without the possibility of having a rollback election. Now, just because you go over the rollback rate doesn't mean you'll automatically have a rollback election. It just means there's a possibility. And again, it all depends on the amount of money in your budget and how much you need to operate from one year to the next.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Crisp.
I have a question real quick. Recent, sorry, recent valuations, actually, when the taxes went up for next year, went up by across, not across, I can't say across the board, but for the most part, all valuations went up, yet by, you know, on average, I think, what was it, like 6% or what was it throughout the city?
Average was probably about 4. When you take into consideration people that had over 65 exemptions, disability exemptions, theirs didn't go up as much, theirs went up maybe 3%. People that did not have that exemption went up about maybe 5.5% on average. It'll vary by individual, but on average.
Okay, now, having those valuations go up and doing the math, are we saying that more assets had lost town, I mean, left town? Because you would almost have to see that if we kept an effective tax rate, that that same percentage would have been reduced right from our tax rate, but we're only seeing about .005.
Keep in mind, the effective rate is only looking at the same properties being taxed in both years.
Okay, that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, it's only the same properties taxed in both years. And even though you had an increase in your real estate value, which is land and buildings, you had a decrease of over 5.5 million in commercial personal property and industrial personal property. Again, companies that have downsized, companies that have closed, left, taken their personal property. So the difference, the net gain that you had was only 1.55%. Or in dollar amounts, it was a gain of, a gain of $12,470,533 in value.
And that's what I wanted to express, is that, you know, the simple math would say, oh, if you go up by X number of percent, then in order to stay the same, you come down by the same percentage off of it. But we're coming down by less than, you know, less than 1%.
Because you're not comparing apples to apples.
Because, because some of the, some of the apples fell off the cart also, so that's another point that I am happy you expressed there, the 5.5 million that actually left.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're still seeing decreases in that industrial personal property, and it's all related to the oil and gas industry and, you know, spinoffs from that oil and gas industry.
And we're looking at operating on the same levy as last year from the same tax base as the effect rate, so, yeah.
Right.
And then also, there's money generated from your sales tax revenue. Because of that money that was generated this past year, your tax rate is actually able to be lowered by, you know, 2.4% or 2.4 cents. Had you not had that half-cent sales tax in place, your tax rate would be 2.4 cents higher to make up for that money that's coming in from the sales tax revenue.
See, so this does actually take into account those sales tax revenues.
That's correct, too. The effective rate, you have to deduct that from your, from your rollback rate.
And, but that's been the case for...
That's always been the case, yeah. That's always been the case. In years when the sales tax revenue has really been high, it makes a significant difference in the lowering of your tax rate. But lately, it hasn't been as high as it has been in years past, but that's true everywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sidney.
Thank you, Mr. Vella.
Roland's got some slides. He wants to present all this as well.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I really don't have much to add after Mr. Vella said that. He always does a good job with his presentation. Let me see, once we get this up. I was going to start by going over a few definitions also, but Mr. Vella already touched on those also, but we'll start with the fund balance, the definition of fund balance, because you'll be seeing it in the presentations now and for the budget also. So basically, how you get the fund balance is you... Where's the pointer? There it is. Okay, so fund balance, what we do is we get the beginning fund balance by getting the prior year's ending current assets minus your current liabilities. So that's how you get your beginning fund balance. And then from there, for the current year, you add the current year revenues, and you subtract the current year expenses, and that gives you the projected year-end fund balance. For the property tax rate, it's made up of two. You've got your INS and your MNO. The INS, of course, is your debt rate that's used to pay your, your city debt. The MNO is used to provide the funds for the maintenance and operations. Your effective rate, as Mr. Vella mentioned, is basically gives you the same amount of revenue generated as the previous year on the same tax base. The rollback rate is the same tax rate that would be needed to raise the same amount of taxes levied in the prior plus the 8% for MNO. So the revenue and the proposed budget, what we have right now in the proposed budget was the exact same amount of revenue as the prior year. It wasn't increased anymore, so that's what's in y'all's current budget at the time, right now. And what we're asking for tonight is not to adopt the tax rate, but just a record vote, or as Mr. Vella explained, if it's anything, the effective rate or below, you don't really need a record vote. It doesn't hurt to do it, but you just need a majority vote. Anything above that, of course, will require the two public hearings and so forth. The city charter requires for us to adopt the budget no later than September 15. The ad valorem taxes for maintenance and operations for the city for 2015, 16, and 17 has been as follows. The 2018 is towards the bottom, which is went up to 200, I mean, I'm sorry, $817,215,228, which is a 1.5% increase from the prior year. And it's generated the following tax levies for the general fund. As you can see, from 2015 to 2017, there's been an increase of 17, 33, and 23%. But also, if you, if you note that from 2015 to 2017, the values have gone down quite a bit. There are 1.1, almost 1.2 billion, and then all the way down to 817 million. So that's a, that's a drop of almost 368 million from our peak in 2015. As Mr. Vella mentioned, if we go with the effective rate, that will give us some additional $8,858 in additional revenues. That would also generate about $2,967,864 for the general fund. The rollback rate, which is higher, would generate $3,400, $3,4,124. The tax... Yes, ma'am?
Sorry to interrupt. Is there anything, like, because we didn't have a handout or anything to follow? Do you have something that we could...
Get these to us.
I mean, it's hard to kind of...
Didn't get any of this.
We don't have anything to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
Uh-uh. And I don't know if we have the printout also that Mr. Vella usually gives a breakdown on the over 65, and we didn't get any of that.
Last year, we got the whole thing, too. A little packet.
I'm so sorry to bother you.
I'll get Vanessa to print that out, too.
Yeah, they'll get you those so you can follow it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm trying to make notes here, and I'm like, okay, where can I reference?
No, no, you should. I'm sorry, I thought you had the hard copy already in y'all's packet.
Uh-uh.
Okay, so the total assessed value last year was 804,745, 44,695. This year has gone up to 817,215,228. So that's an increase of 1.5%. And as you can see on the scale, it has the reverse effect. Your values go up, the effective rate goes down. And also, to add to that, the same thing, Mr. Vella, as far as your sales tax, the increase in the sales tax also helps to lower your effective rate. So the, this is kind of a breakdown of where your tax dollars go. This gives you a kind of a clear picture of, this is residential, of course, but big chunk of that, 47%, goes to the school district. Sorry, Mr. Burke. 25% goes to the county, and the 19% goes to the city. And then you've got a few other smaller ones, which is your AWA and your Jimwells County Lateral Road. I think that's what it stands for. So basically, our recommendation is that the city council approve by majority vote the effective rate of .523621, which is a small increase of .21% from last year. And again, this is not approving the tax rate, it's just for a record vote and for the purpose of having to hold any public hearings if it goes above the effective rate, but that's just the maximum that we can go if we do approve that rate. We can go anything below that, but that will be the highest rate that we can go. So we're recommending the effective rate, which basically is the 8,858 above last year's, or .21% from last year.
It is, no, it's not above, it's below.
It's below. It's 53.
Yep, but the base, we're talking about, the 8,858 is additional revenues because of the higher assessed value.
Oh, I got you. Now, you're not saying, yeah, because of 8,000, I got you now.
It's just a little bit, it's just a little bit over. Whether you guys wanted to do it exactly, you know, would be up to y'all. But, but asking for the vote just gives, gives us the ability to go, not go higher than that amount.
Still asking to adopt the effective rate.
Effective rate.
Yeah, and it's...
Thank you.
So Roland, what you're saying is that increase of .21% would equal out to 8,000?
Right, would equal out to 8,858, which is something that we, you know, going through the budget, getting that out of there is not difficult to do.
Right.
And so when we go to adopt it, you know, we were talking about, we were calculating, this budget was, is an effective rate budget, and Mr. Vella has these numbers, and so this is what was calculated. So if we would have lowered this budget by the $8,800, a very insignificant amount, then we would be probably proposing a different rate, which I plan to be proposing at the adoption time, by, it'd be this budget minus $8,000 to get us at just a slightly, slightly lower rate. But it is an effective rate budget operating on the same dollars, but the new, the 8,000 is from new property coming in.
It's, it's a value increase, last year's levy compared to this year's levy at that effective rate.
At that effective rate? Yeah.
Counsel, do you all have any questions? Mr. Molina? Mr. Crisp? You want me to come back to you?
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Trying to figure out what that, no.
Ms. Carrasco?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So Mr. Sparza, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is, or what, what staff is recommending is that we, can you, because that's kind of throwing me off. If we're going to go back and, and decrease, why would we have to do, make a decision today?
Well, no, today, today you're, you're making a decision on, on the proposed budget, which is the highest amount that, that you will, that you, if you adopt a rate today, that's the highest that you can go. You can only go down from there.
Right.
And so an effective rate budget is, is utilizing the same revenues as last year from the same tax base. And so that's what we're proposing here. Now, this is generating a little bit more money. And, you know, to, to not have that increase, we just have to decrease that, this by about $8,000, which is very doable. But, but today, it's just setting a rate that you won't go any higher than. And an effective rate budget is, is what we're, what we're proposing. So it's a tax rate decrease. Now, it's, it's a tax levy, it is an $8,000 increase.
It's an increase in your levy, the amount of money you're going to receive. It's a decrease in the tax rate, but remember, you have more taxable value, you have less debt that you owe this year. And the proposed rate, as they're saying, it's just a proposed rate, but we do have to publicize in the paper what your proposed rate is before you can adopt. And you have to adopt your budget first, and then you adopt the tax rate. You can do it at the same meeting, it just has to be different agenda items, and you have to adopt your budget first. But you can't do any of that until we post that notice to begin with. And then I believe you have to wait at least seven days before you can have your meeting to set a tax rate if you're going to be going with the effective rate or less.
Correct.
But you do need to have a proposed rate for the purpose of that notice that has to be published.
Okay.
And the ideals, the ideal thing behind everything is the fact that we can keep or decrease tax rate, tax rates continuously, but through economic growth, which hopefully we can start foreseeing some economic growth, our, our levies continue to grow, so our increase in our taxes will always go up, but our tax rates can stay down, so the individual themselves pay less, hopefully, or, or the exact same thing over time. But, I mean, that's how cities grow, right? You want expansion, you want that levy to increase continuously so that we see more assets coming into town, we see houses getting built, we see empty lots becoming businesses over time. So the idea that the taxes themselves may be going up, we have increased the levy. So, yeah, now, we did see some valuation differences, but we have seen some assets, and we have some new businesses coming into town, so it's understandable to that point.
Now, there is a scenario, correcting if I'm wrong, Mr. Vella, where somebody's value did not go up, and if you were to adopt the effective rate, they would see a tax decrease.
That's true.
Because their value didn't go up.
Yeah, we're, and what happens is, as we talk about the levy, the levy is, is in general, but as Ms. Vella was talking about, too, commercial properties, some residential properties, people with a homestead, we can't control those individually. We can control, you know, what we take in and what we spend. And so we're saying, an effective rate is, we're going to operate off the same dollars that we did the year before. And so we don't want to have a tax increase on there. And so that's where we're, we're proposing effective rate. And, but in the course of everybody's individual properties, there could be differences. Some could go up a little bit, some could go down, but that's, it's not our control here. Our control is the general overall levy that we're taking in. And so if you look at this budget, what we propose on tax revenue is the same as we proposed last year on tax revenue, sales tax revenue.
Counsel, any other questions? Comments? Complaints? Thank you, Mr. Roland. I appreciate you. Okay, there's no other questions, comments, or complaints? I'll entertain a, no, sorry, we have to do a public hearing at this time. Can we go on?
No.
Okay, so the time is 7:05. We will conduct a public hearing at this time. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against this agenda item is welcome to come up and At this time, if anybody would like to speak on agenda item number four, on the tax rate, come up and speak. Okay, so the time is now 7:06, and the public hearing is now closed. So now I'll entertain a vote, so we'll take a record vote. Just...
May I make a motion that we, we don't want to set the tax rate? We want to...
That we, that we propose.
That we propose the tax rate not to exceed .523621 per hundred valuation for the 2018, 19 fiscal year budget.
Okay, can I get a second?
Speak.
What was that rate again?
The effective rate of 5, .523621.
I thought I had heard something different, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're just keeping it the same.
And if you'd like to do a record vote, call a record vote on that, Mayor.
Yes, I would like to do a record vote at this time. Mr. Molina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Crisp?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Ms. Carrasco?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. So at this time, the proposed tax rate stands as .523621.
Now, that's the max that we...
Max.
And that's the max.
And that is the effective rate.
And it is the effective rate, correct. Okay, Mr. Lemon, is that good enough?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Counsel. We'll move on to agenda item number five, conduct a public hearing on fiscal year 2017, 2018 revised budget and fiscal year 2018, 2019 proposed budget.
Mayor, this is simply just a public hearing, a required public hearing on the budget, proposed budget. We can have another public hearing at a later time as well, on the 28th if you want, or on September 11th, we're adopting it. But this is something that's required also to have a public hearing at this time. I would also recommend that, since we're not going to adopt it, after the public hearing, if, if you would so choose to motion to postpone adoption of the budget till a later date, just to be safe.
Okay. I think that would be safe. Counsel?
And, and the workshop and budget part is going to later on in the agenda toward the end. So this is really just a public hearing if somebody wants to come up and speak on the proposed budget.
Okay. So at this time, it's 7:08. On agenda item number five, we'll conduct a, a public hearing on fiscal year 2017, 2018 revised budget and fiscal year 2018, 2019 proposed budget. If anybody has any comments, questions, concerns, please step forward. If anybody would like to speak on agenda item number five, proposed budget, come forward. The time is now 7:08. We will close the public hearing on agenda item number five.
We can entertain a motion, Mayor, to postpone the adoption of the budget till a later meeting.
So motion.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? No opposed? Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number six. The city council may enter into closed or executive session for the following matters. A, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.071 and 2, 2 Texas Government Code to receive legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligation, obligations arising out of the labor negotiations undertaken pursuant to chapter 174 Texas Local Government Code between the City of Alice, Texas and the Alice Police Officers Association, majority bargaining agent, and ratification of tentative agreement by the association. And B, attorney consultation pursuant to section 551.0712 Texas Government Code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's legal rights, duties, privileges, and obligations under chapter 174 Texas Local Government Code arising out of the pending collecting bargaining, bargaining negotiations between the City of Alice and the duly-recognized majority bargaining agent for the city's firefighter personnel. The time is now 7:10. Counsel will go into closed session.